Thank you for joining us for the Board of, Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 1:00 PM Monday, March 29, 2021. Calling the meeting to order, the first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public who it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could just make a little comment before we start our meeting today?
Please do.
I'm sure you'll approve. I just want to let the public know, if you are watching, that we do have a couple thousand extra vaccinations this week. So if you could please go to centraloregoncovidvaccine.com and register. We would love to have more of our community vaccinated so that we can reach the herd immunity of 120,000. So we're really excited that we, I believe, received almost like 9,000 first doses this week and there are available spots. So please, if you know anyone that needs their vaccination, it's, now is the appropriate time to sign up. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Get those numbers up. First item is consideration of signature for natural resources grant agreement. Ed Keith.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Ed Keith, County Forester. Today I have for you a document number 2021-272, which is a grant agreement between the Oregon Department of Forestry and Deschutes County. This was a grant that we applied for at the beginning of February. Fairly short notice, the Oregon Department of Forestry was giving some money from the Legislative E-Board, approximately $5 million for various forest restoration and fuels reduction projects throughout the state. We applied for one of those after bringing this forward to you on the 1st of February. And we did, we were notified on the 8th that we were successful with that grant application and just having received the final agreement from Oregon Department of Forestry last week, I have this grant agreement. It's in the amount of $220,000. It's for fuel reduction in, or on county-owned lands. The lands that we had planned for this grant are in the city of Lepine, the city of Bend, and then north of the city of Bend. Just a couple other things. Since we did receive this, and it does have a really short timeline for implementation, the funds have to be spent, and so the projects have to be completed by June 30th. We did move forward with bidding out those projects through our qualified pool of contractors that we refresh each year. Those first round of projects had been bid out. They did come in under what I had estimated for budgeting, so that's good. And we're in the process of getting those going and then identifying some additional acres, actually, to use up the remainder of those funds. So it looks like we will be able to complete all the projects that we had planned and potentially even more depending on bids that are still pending. With that, if there's question, any questions I could answer or more clarifications that's needed.
I've heard, yeah, there's, this money was awarded to, you know, different jurisdictions, a couple of projects that is going on in the state right now. Driving in, I had heard about that and driving in today. Sure enough, some was on the side of the highway with their, their Bobcat Skid steer mulcher machine. I don't know if it was highway land or not, but I mean, the machines are out there doing it right now.
No, it's a great, it's a great time to be getting fuels reduction work done, especially, you know, in light of the fires we experienced yesterday. And Ed, I, my one question about this was about the property on the north end. So the piece that's inside the city of Bend, the piece that's inside the city of Lepine's UGB, I can, you know, I can, we have a pretty good sense that those will, you know, be used for residential or commercial development at some point. The piece on the, on the north, you know, just outside the UGB, on the north side of Bend, do we have any sense of kind of what the ultimate fate or use of that land might be, or?
I certainly don't, other than, you know, maybe Tom Anderson might have some thoughts on that. You know, I could see at some point in time, but not anytime imminent, you know, future expansion of the city of Bend, but I think that's, that's a ways out. So with that in mind, just trying to mitigate some of those fuels. We did have a fire on the lot that's across the highway this last year that caused evacuation. If you might recall, this summer, actually, and so this is where we started to look at this lot and say, we've got to start to kind of compartmentalize these fuels a little bit and do some fuel reduction out there. So that's, but I couldn't really speak to the, the future use of this lot.
Commissioners, no, we really don't have any immediate plans for the land. It's all zoned EFU. It's, as Ed alluded to, it's the portion of the northern part of Juniper Ridge that the county acquired from BLM. This, the portion subject to the fuel reduction is on the west side of the highway, which is further away from the UGB line than the property on the east side where the fire was. So to the extent that any of that land is subject to urban expansion at some date in the future, that likely the property on the east side would come in first. So this property is even further out, not even on the immediate planning horizon for any kind of urban expansion. So it's just, it's, you know, for some kind of long-term future development, but we have no, no immediate plans for it.
But one of the benefits of treating that piece of land right, or one of the, one of the factors in treating that piece of land now is just, it's, it's proximity to Bend and Juniper Ridge and to that fire that we had just last year, right? Okay, that's helpful, that's helpful context.
So do we?
I would love to mention at this moment in time for all of our residents that we do have fire-free dates coming up, May, what, 1st? At not till, what, just like the 16th, and then it goes from like the 22nd of May to June 5th in outlying areas. So if you haven't seen the documentary Paradise, you need to see that because, you know, yesterday's winds were clearly frightening when they were, what, 55 miles an hour here? And then tomorrow, if you're interested, the Hoover Institute through Stanford is doing a presentation called Wildfires in the West. And fascinatingly enough, they have five, no, four different states are represented with people on their panels from Arizona, Washington, California, and Colorado, but no one from Oregon. So maybe, I know, I thought that was, anyway, I think their presentations are always at the highest level. If you can go to that, to the Hoover Institute and watch their presentation. I think it should be, I signed up for it. You never know what you're going to learn, but please, everyone, you need to be prepared. Have your go-bag, remember? The go-bag, your important documents in it, so you can just grab it and go out the door. When you get the call that it's level three and you need to leave.
Yeah. So one question for this grant, is there any kind of big picture where these dollars are coming from? You know, was it a legislative authorized pool of dollars, or is there any other information about that?
It was authorized by the legislature, actually fairly unique. It was part of a larger package that was of, I believe the figure was $17 million that went to Oregon Department of Forestry and and the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office. A lot of those dollars went for balancing the books on last year's fire season, but also paying for severity resources like helicopters and air tankers for this upcoming season, for being more prepared. So I think the recognition was that the state wanted to have a substantial investment in wildfire preparedness, really across the board, both in, you know, being prepared for suppression, but also trying to provide some incentives to get some of this urgent fuel reduction work done. So so that's, that's the, so those funds- So, so that's, that's the, so those funds were granted to those two agencies by the Legislative Emergency Board. And this, this portion was specifically identified by the legislature for fuel reduction and forest resiliency projects.
Great, thank you.
So I move Chair's Signature of Dr. Mint Number 2021-272, Natural Resources Grant Agreement Acceptance.
I second.
It looks like it's Chair's Signature.
Yes, Chair's Signature.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Great, thank you. So before you go, a little status, you know, we did have a fire event, two fire events yesterday. Thank you very much for following that. I know Tom Anderson, our county administrator, Whitney Hale, PIO was involved, 911 was Joint Information Center location, is my understanding, but a lot of resources deployed and, yeah, get this whole thing down. So what's the current status, as you might know?
The acres were pretty recently updated to 211 acres, so fairly sizable fire for this time of year, obviously driven by winds. A number of fires, so the two prominent ones you noted, this one at Bull Springs and then the one at Deschutes River Woods, but quite a lot of other fires that were luckily, or maybe not luckily, but thankfully stopped before they really got any larger. There was quite a few that were scattered across the county yesterday in the late afternoon. So firefighters are actively mopping that up. This morning, they were, I know, finding hotspots and getting the rest of those lined. The main fire was lined last night. I, I do know, listening on the radio, they were still finding a couple, you know, spots that still need to be mopped up, and they'll probably be working out there over the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you for that status. And, yeah, so you think of a downed power line, possibly sparking a fire, but also just that little cleanup fire, even if it's down to embers, when the winds blow like that, it sure can, you know, spark up a fire out of a, even a contained cleanup fire pit or pile. So this is interesting, you know, and it is dry in the end of March.
Yeah. Ed was, Ed was describing for me the, the system that, that Sisters Fire Department has for, basically people notifying the fire department that they're going to be doing debris burning or, or field burning or things like that. And then the benefit of that being that then you've got a record of where stuff is going on, and when you know of a, of a big wind event or something like this happening out of season in the spring, you can, you can call those people up and check back in with them. So I can imagine this unusual, unusually early fire kind of episode, kind of raising questions, or people having questions about, well, what, you know, how do we make sure that we have less of these, you know, in the spring in the future?
Which brings us back to fire-free.
Surely it does, and yes, the wind. Yes, we do not want to be to have new Santa Ana winds blowing, that's for sure.
But, but I, I mean, I do, I can picture people asking about, you know, field burning and debris burning and, and, you know, how do we, you know, how specifically do we make sure that we let people do what they need to do on their property, but also keep everyone else safe?
Yep.
So have they determined the cause of the second, the 211 acre fire?
I have not heard that it's been determined at this point.
Okay.
But, but several of the other ones that, that were caught were from either debris or field burning?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Item number two, non-prime resource lands amendment. Peter Gatawski, thank you for joining us in person.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, for the record, Peter Gatawski, Planning Manager. It's a, it is a pleasure to be in front of you. It's been a long time for me. For context, on March 17th, the Board of County Commissioners had a meeting with Jim Rue, the Director for the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and some of his staff, to share perspectives on options for proceeding as it pertains to what we're calling non-prime resource lands. Deschutes County has amendments that are still active that were intended to apply to six, what I would call legacy rural residential areas. To, the proposal was to amend the comprehensive plan, to establish policies that will allow the county, if acknowledged, to customize a zone that would allow residential uses and their accessory uses as used as permitted outright. As the staff memorandum for the packet on March 17th noted, and the memo that's currently before you states, Deschutes County doesn't have any options to address these circumstances without a change in state law. And as was discussed and worth highlighting, Nick Leelak, the Community Development Director, and myself, over the last 10-plus years in coordination with Dave and his team, legal counsel, really, I think, have explored the Big Look Bill, exceptions processes, non-resource lands amendments, and then lastly, regional problem solving. And unfortunately, it, as was stated on March 17th, there's, there's not a path that would insulate Deschutes County if we went forward from an appeal, and I think ultimately a rejection at, at the courts if we tried to go forward. So what was discussed on March 17th by staff, and it's been introduced into our draft work plan, is if the Board agrees to withdraw the amendments, and I would, if that action did occur, I would alert the Department of Land Conservation and Development with a former, a formal withdraw. What's been discussed as, as part of our work plan is to explore options that would allow applicants to utilize a streamlined approach or relying on some templates that could be from prior decisions that were associated with residential dwelling approvals in these six areas, which have either been by non-farm dwelling standards or by template dwelling standards. So at the time, there seemed that there was interest in at least placing that in our draft work plan, which we have done. And of course, there's been a hearing scheduled with the Board on the work plan in the middle of May. So this afternoon, I am respectfully, and I know it's awkward, especially for staff who's been in the trenches for so long to try to find a path forward, but the staff is respectfully requesting the Board consider withdrawing these amendments. And again, there, there's, there's ways that we can try to offer some remedies to these property owners that live in these six areas, but as of right now, we just don't have a viable path forward. So staff's here to answer any questions you may have, and certainly appreciate the Board's support over the years to allow staff to fully engage our partners at the state.
So this is an effort that was started kind of in discussions with our local property owners, running it through the Planning Commission, just really kind of running it to ground, what does it really mean, our state land use, parcel-zoned, exclusive farm use in forest. And I'm just acknowledging that as the Board of Commissioners, we're kind of the front end of the project, you know, so if we're, and if we stop the project, that's, that's what we're doing here, withdrawing the project officially. It's been, yeah, many years that I've been involved, and we do have residents come to us sometimes that aren't up to speed on, you know, all the intricacies of Oregon land use. And it's interesting, the kind of the level of information you have to have to understand, okay, I understand this is farm and there's trees on the land, but it's a small parcel and there's all the smart polsters, small parcels next to me, and I'm supposed to what? You know, I mean, it's just interesting situation that we find ourselves in. And we have had public hearings on this. I got two big old binders in my desk, I didn't carry them down today, but very thick binders on this subject. I want to thank the community for being engaged. We obviously got the ear of, you know, land advocacy organizations, and, you know, they've testified many times on this, and as I say, we were told that there's a, there's not a, there's no path here and you can't make a path here. I think that was the last time around that I, when I learned and I heard the terminology. So.
We were going to go to prison, remember?
Well, yeah, well.
Yes.
Yeah.
We've been trying because we have heard from so many citizens who have land, it's really honestly, what is it, 900 total acres of these six different divisions of Deschutes County, back from the, what, 1970s, pre-'70s? So it's really, it's really sad that hopefully some kind of remedies that we can do for them as individuals, I guess.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited that the Community Development Department has some ideas, some concepts for streamlining or templating this process so that individual landowners who live in those six areas can, or who own properties in those six areas can, can build the homes that they, they, you know, that they want to, they want to build and that they, you know, they, they have a certain amount of property rights to, to have.
Well, yeah, so, and I, so I would say it differently. You know, I think our land use system, wonderful idea in 1973, the zoning and the efforts put in place many years, but it, you know, it is, I mean, there's a belief that conserving land is going to save something or somebody, or the wildlife or the forest, but the density of people and population is also a detriment, you know, when we're, we're not allowing somebody that owns a parcel to be able to build, and then making the dense places more dense and leaving the rural rural is, it's kind of counterintuitive, some people, you know, not everybody, but obviously it's a conflict point. So I would just advocate for a big, robust discussion in the state of Oregon on land use at some point. Obviously, we've been told that it ain't happening now, so. And then, I mean, when it comes down to it, you know, yeah, explore options to improve and streamline the permitting process for those rural residential areas. Sounds great. But I don't, as, as, I think we talked last time on the subject, I don't support having us, the government, put rules in place to work around government's rules. So we've got to watch that path. It's not appropriate for government to do that at multiple levels, so.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think we are a local government body trying to, you know, sneak around the state's, the state's rules. I think we're, we're coming up with a, a process to work within the state land use planning system and, and, you know, allow something to happen. And I mean, we've seen this, you know, we have, we have seen already that there are, you know, individual property owners in these areas who have, you know, they've run the trap lines and, and, you know, come up with a viable process to, you know, to get to that, to the home that they want, and so we're sort of just talking about replicating that.
Well, I think it boils down to the appeal process and the land use appealability. You know, non-farm dwellings or template dwelling can always be appealed. So at any moment, we have a situation where a land advocacy organization based somewhere other than that geographic area where somebody's trying to build, has the opportunity to throw down a card and say, okay, well, I'm going to make this the most painful process you have ever seen. And that's what, that's just what I see. It's just out there.
Yeah, I, I mean, from the history I've heard described, we haven't, we haven't seen that at the individual parcel.
But it's there, it's appealable.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, just the facts as I see it. So, but I mean, this isn't our fight either. I mean, this is kind of the state-level fight, you know, this is the one-size-fits-all land use system in the state of Oregon that's probably got to a point where there's some discussions to be had. So I'm just advocating for those property owners and future property owners at this time.
Yeah, I guess I feel like I am too.
Yeah, well, that's my point. I mean, we're probably going down the same path, different, different terminology, not a problem. Okay, well, so there's their support for officially, you know, withdrawing this effort and changing the terminology in the work plan. In fact, how are we voting on?
Would we need to make a motion, or?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang, Chairman Debone. Yes, staff is, just for the record, respectfully asking that a motion be made. And with that, after the motion, as I mentioned on the front end, I will then alert the Department of Land Conservation and Development that this specific file and these amendments are withdrawn.
So the motion will just include the words about changing the sentence in draft work plan? Is that kind of the?
Regarding the draft work plan, we'll be coming back to you in May on that. So we're, we're, the purpose of referencing that language was just to let you know that this commission has included that, asked us to include that in the work plan. We'll be coming to you officially at a hearing in, in May. It is just for the reader, for anybody who might be listening or watching at home, is to acknowledge that the Board of County Commissioners has expressed interest in streamlining this process, and we, all things being equal, looks like that will be thoroughly considered and likely incorporated into our work plan for next fiscal year. So the only recommendation I'm seeking tonight is just to withdraw the amendments.
So withdrawing the file number, basically? I mean, I'm just wondering what the business.
Yeah, if you want to mention the file number, that would be fine.
Okay.
What about the costs involved with these six different units? Are the costs going to be maintained at the same? I believe it's quite expensive, isn't it? If we have a template, is there any way that it'll be at a reduced cost?
Thank you, Commissioner Adair. It's a great question. I think it's one that's going to be considered as part of our work plan, I think as part of our budget about, and our fees, that if, if there's support for this type of approach, I think a conversation would be well-used to talk about a modification, to the extent the Board found that, you know, worthwhile. The fees are approximately for a non-farm dwelling, I want to say the fees are about $31 to $3200. For a template dwelling, it's about approximately $27 to $2800. And that doesn't cover the experts that one needs to demonstrate that one doesn't have suitable farm or forest soils, but it is, I know the issue in terms of fees and how it applies to land use application is something that CDD is currently working on, and it will be presenting to the Board and the Budget Committee later this spring.
And if, you know, if a soil survey is, you know, is another, you know, few thousand-dollar cost for each of these landowners, I would be very interested in exploring ways that we could facilitate essentially some kind of bulk order, you know, and get a, hopefully get a volume discount to have a number of properties, you know, surveyed at the same time, as opposed to each one going out and contracting, you know, contracting that survey for themselves. Like maybe we could do some kind of, you know, a partnership with a university program or something to get, you know, to get the, essentially to get the data that's needed for, for these folks at a lower cost.
So is there a motion? And I think it'll be withdrawal non-prime resource lands by file number.
Okay, so I move we withdraw the non-resource NPR lands amendments, file number 247-19-000265-PA for our discussion.
I second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? And thank you for the discussion. I mean, it's, it's a long, long road on that one. So calling for the vote, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
I think the long road is an understatement. I think this is going on, listening to some, remember some of the people that came in, and they'd owned their property for decades? And, you know, they kept thinking we were going to be able to accomplish something, and clearly we learned on March 17th that unless we can get the legislators to do something, we aren't going to accomplish anything, other than make better templates, right?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Great, thank you.
Here's a pathway.
Item number three, Worrell Park and Wall Street Parking redevelopment. Lee Randall.
Christie's here as well.
Yes. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Commissioners, for the record, Kristi Bolinger, Rill Park, our Deschutes County Property Manager, and Lee Randall and myself will be co-presenting today.
Thank you. We're talking about property right over there.
Yes, we are. So today, we're here to ask the Board to direct staff to proceed with requests for proposals for design services and to develop construction documents based on current conceptual plan. For. plan for the Worrell Park and Wall Street Parking Redevelopment. So what we wanted to do is to provide you a recap and then also provide some context for those that may not be familiar with this project or are joining us online or, online, basically, so on the premise and, and in preparation for the courthouse expansion, in 2019, the county completed a comprehensive parking study to determine what, what additional parking, if, if any, would be needed based on the City of Bend Development Code. So out of that parking study, that was a collaborative effort between Ultra Architecture, City of Bend Facilities, and Property Management, it was determined that a development condition would be in place for the courthouse expansion, which would require an additional forty-eight parking spaces of parking in the downtown campus area and within a thousand feet of the courthouse. So, fast forward, in fall of 2020, we put together, Facilities and Property Management put together nine different parking options and presented those to your board for consideration, and this, again, would provide additional parking for the, for the courthouse expansion. Out of those concepts, the board chose to take a closer look at, at the Worrell Park or redevelopment of the Worrell Park in the Wall Street Parking Area to our west here. So through that process, the board directed us to develop a conceptual plan that would include improved public access to Worrell Park, enhanced aesthetics and visibility of the Deshute Services Building from Wall Street for better visitor experience, and increased parking capacity to satisfy the known development condition of the courthouse expansion. So from that point, from, from about September on, we worked with a local architect firm, BLRB Architects, and we developed a couple of concepts, and we worked to distill that down to, and refine that based on the board's overarching priorities, and we also included other important elements like drive-through ballot and tax payment drop-off, a specific area to support community partner, mobile vans, et cetera. So in February of this year, we presented a concept to your board in one-on-ones, and we're here today to talk through that a little bit more and kind of, you know, kind of go from there and then ask for your support to move forward with an, with an RFP. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Lee to continue.
For the record, Lee Randall, Facilities Director, thank you again for having us here today, we've put together a lot of information over the last several months that we'd like to share and give the board an opportunity for further input on. To begin, I do want to emphasize that this is a concept only, we've developed it to this point for the sake of discussion and to give us a starting point, these aren't full design documents, the goal was to get a concept that the board could evaluate and then provide further direction for moving forward. The impetus, as Christie said, was Worrell Park and improved access, and we'll touch on that a little bit more, and then an increased parking capacity as driven by a potential courthouse expansion. So to the Worrell Park concept specifically, we've provided a handout of the concept, and we have it here on the screen for visibility, again, the design considerations were improved public access, enhanced aesthetics for the Deshute Services Building, and increased parking capacity. To get into the specifics a little bit, the parcel that, or the view that you see on the screen, there are three tax parcels that that represents, two of the tax parcels currently are Wall Street, the parking lot, what we call the Wall Street Lot, and then part of the drive access to the Deshute Services Building, and then the, the third tax parcel is Worrell Park, which was designated by the board previously as a park in nineteen ninety-seven. Worrell Park was named after William K. Worrell, former Ben Lepine Superintendent, it's largely undeveloped, it has a walking path, a few park benches, and a few picnic tables, and one of the big challenges is access to the park, usability, and strictly speaking, accessibility for folks that may be using wheeled mobility devices or have other means of, of moving about, that the park in its current design presents significant challenges for. The second component, as I mentioned, is the Wall Street Parking Lot, currently it's sixty-eight spaces, those spaces serve the entire downtown campus, total parking spaces on the downtown campus that serve about ten buildings total in six-hundred-and-fifty-four spaces. So this is a percentage of those spaces, primarily in terms of use, it gets a lot of use for juror parking because of its close proximity to the courthouse, and then as well for staff parking and visitor parking to the various downtown buildings, which are comprised by health services, the Deshute Services Building here, courthouse, as I mentioned, community development, and other buildings that provide direct public service. So the concept that we've put together that you see on the screen, it currently shows sixty-eight spaces, again, it's conceptual, it could be plus or minus that number of spaces, and that is, that would meet what we project to be a required, a code-required forty-eight spaces were the courthouse to expand under the current concept for that expansion. So at Board Direction, several months ago, we pursued this plan, putting together what we thought would represent the direction that we'd been provided by the board for the things we'd mentioned earlier, and then, and specifically for the park, the things we emphasized were, as Christie mentioned, ballot pickup and drop-off, access for our partners that operate mobile service units, whether it be for blood drives, et cetera, or, or health services vans that provide services to the public, and then certainly when it comes to the park, accessible routes, and that would relate to the park itself as well as for folks that are accessing the Deshute Services Building or other buildings where you're, you're coming from Wall Street, from routes on Wall Street to get to those services. Those are kind of the big picture items that we wanted to point out for the board and then provide an opportunity for questions and discussions, and unless Christie has something else to add, I would welcome questions or discussion with the board at this point.
Thoughts?
I was, my, my first question is about, about the Worrell family, I'm, I'm wondering if we've had a chance to present some of these concepts, these park concepts to, to them, and, and what kind of reactions we've gotten?
Commissioners, I can answer that, Mr. Worrell, as you probably know, is deceased, his widow, Connie Worrell-Drewliner, is well-known in town, was the owner of Express Personnel for many years, and I consider her a friend of mine, I invited her in several months ago to go over these concepts with her, and, you know, we, it was certainly our intent from the get-go to honor Mr. Worrell's legacy in any makeover of Worrell Park, Connie said that, to this day, she still drives by with her grandchildren and points out Grandpa's Park, and it was very important to her that his legacy also be preserved in, in makeover, so once I had a chance to go through the design with her and the, and the more detailed elements that Lee has touched on, particularly the, the garden, the lawn, the playground, the sort of meditative areas that are included in the design, she, and I hope I'm not mischaracterizing anything, you know, I'm sure she'd love to speak to any one of you about it herself, but she seemed genuinely pleased with the design and particularly with the, with the concept that her late husband's memory would be preserved here in a more usable, in a more active way, we, we anticipate that this concept of the park would be much more actively used than the existing Worrell Park that we see across the street there, so I think it is, I'm not, I'm not extending myself at all by saying that Connie, Mr. Worrell's ex-wife, is genuinely supportive of and pleased with the design.
Great, thank you.
So I have a question, I'm looking back at the documentation that we were given last year about this, how many spots are we now talking about in this two-point-five-million-dollar project?
So, under this concept, it shows sixty-eight additional spaces?
Sixty-eight, because according to looking at the presentation last summer that we were given, it was going to be a hundred-and-eighty-two total spots, and that's without ripping the whole thing down, and if we took the whole thing down, it was going to be two-hundred-and-fifty, so, and then, option number seven, which I'm looking back at it now because that's, that was going to be a net gain of sixty-two spots, where we need forty-eight for the courthouse, so I'm going like, somehow it seems like our original paperwork was not quite accurate in the number of spots we were going to need, option number seven, it's, it said, according to my notes from last summer, it was going to go down fifteen feet in elevation, just taking the top off, I mean, actually, that is like a really beautiful-looking park to look at, believe it or not, maybe it's not used, but I've had people drive, tell me that we live, we work in the ugliest building in the county, that I think that park, just to drive by and look at it, is really spectacular, and to see that we want to take it way down, really, for two-and-a-half million dollars, when we need to do a, you know, our parole and probation building, we've got the remodel, and the courthouse, we've got the remodel, and option number seven, actually, maybe that's not true either, but that was going to give us sixty-two spots, and it was supposed to be around half a million dollars, so I'm like, gosh.
Yeah.
We're spending a lot of money, and what are we really getting, and look how empty our parking lot has been, a lot of people are working from home in today's world, to, I know we're going to need it for the courthouse, but even driving in front of the courthouse recently, it's been empty in front, I know that they're, what, down at the fairgrounds with, with the room there, so anyway, yeah, going back through all my notes, I'm like, oh, my gosh, do I want to spend two-and-a-half million dollars on taking down the mountain and losing my ponderosas, I realize you've got trees planned, but I happen to love ponderosa pines, so, anyway.
No, I, I, really, we appreciate that feedback, and this is the opportunity to, to bring this concept to the board for you to provide that feedback, going back to some of those concepts, you know, going back several years, the original, what we drew up were three options, one with a very limited amount of excavation, one that was what we kind of
Number seven, right?
Called partway down, and then an additional one was removing the majority of, of the elevation, the feedback that, in presenting various ideas to the board, the feedback that we came away with, and then we checked back in with the board later, was one to prioritize park space and make sure that we created a park and an aesthetic approach to the Deshute Services Building that was complemented the public nature of the facility and the services being offered, as well as provided a space that essentially was not asphalt-maximizing the amount of parking spaces for the one-point-two-nine acres or so that are represented by that tax lot, so we made an effort to check back in with board, make sure that we had those values that we had heard accurately, and so as a result of that, the number of spaces does decrease, whether it was a target of eighty-seven, and again, that hundred-and-eighty-two was a total number of spaces, we're at a total of a hundred-and-thirty-six, once you have the existing sixty-eight and then add in additional sixty-eight spaces, so ultimately, our effort was to take the feedback we received back from the board related to maximizing the values of the park, accessibility for folks, whether pedestrian or using wheeled mobility devices coming from Wall Street, and then finding a solution that both addressed some parking expansion but made the park, kind of took the park to the next stage in its life, so to speak, going forward and maximize its use for the public coming to the building and staff, so certainly there will always be a trade-off between the number of parking spaces, maximizing the park space itself and the accessibility, this represents one attempt at melding those, those values.
Well, and thank you for that, I can see there are values, many values involved here, especially, you know, making a beautiful welcoming park, also, the, the view from Wall Street towards this building will change drastically, but there'll also be a little bit of elevation characteristics, is my understanding, on the one side of the park, so, yeah, it isn't just maximizing cost for parking spaces, it is kind of the whole picture, a little bit architectural review, the flow, just like you mentioned for, you know, ballot, drop-off, or activities like that, and, yeah, really a home for, you know, possibly the mosaic medical van or a blood drive van, because when we have blood drives in this room, in fact, yeah, they, they kind of just need to get that next-size vehicle out here somehow, so bringing all those values in and putting it all together, this is kind of that, that mature design, because we have talked about this a few times now.
One thing, too, I think it's important to point out, like, if you look at the, if you look at the tax lots there, the, the park footprint, I'm going to switch to the next slide, so we've shared this with you in the past, this is like a topography, so the, the red portion with a little bit of the yellow is the footprint of the park, so at the end of the project, the, the footprint of the park would be relatively the same, it would just be more usable than it is today, so I think that's something to think about.
And I think, finally, in terms of, we did do an analysis, or had the consultant do an analysis of, of the trees before, after, the number of mature trees that could be preserved, an effort has been made to incorporate landscape islands where we have existing mature trees and do our best to preserve, there's about five mature ponderosas, six, depending on how you categorize them by size, and, and we think there's an opportunity to preserve three of those, and depending on the elevation where they fall into the park, so the majority of the trees, of the existing trees that would go away are juniper and aspen, and then they would be replaced with a yet-to-be-determined trees, but with a roughly or greater number of total tree count. In the big picture, those, there's a lot of those details yet to be determined, as I mentioned, this is really just a initial conceptual design, there are a lot of specifics that the board could help direct going forward as that design matures.
So how many parking spots are we getting for two-and-a-half million? What's our plus?
So, under this concept?
Yes.
It shows sixty-eight.
We're going to get sixty-eight more spots.
Sixty-eight additional spaces, and that accounts for, you know, about a third of the construction by, by area of the project, and so a lot of those costs would be associated with preserving the park elements and a reroute of the drive aisles for safety improvements, there's some other details I'm happy to touch on that the, the design incorporates as well.
This will also make a, kind of a walkway from Wall Street into the front of the building instead of walking down the, the sidewalk in Lafayette, so, I mean, yeah, just kind of envisioning what, what it, what it will look like, yeah, so also acknowledging the, the old stone building, you know, there's, talks about a fifty, fifty-three to seven-thousand-dollar construction effort to set up a facade-type of opportunity there, yeah, in a spreadsheet, but that's, that's a building that, yeah, has been used for what, storage, and then, was there something during COVID right now they're using it for?
At, at one time, it was actually set up as a courtroom, and those fixtures are still there at, before the previous court expansion in two thousand and four, and then currently it's being utilized by the, the District Attorney's Office.
Okay, yeah, so that's the facade, the original stone facade, there's an opportunity to make that a little of an archway in here, too, so, so those are discretionary choices, you know, kind of putting in the look and feel, celebrating our history and making sure we respect the fact that that building was, what has been there for so long.
Well, I looked back at the presentations, and one of the, concept number one actually said fifty-eight parking spots, and that was approximately to cost with acquisition and design, one-point-six million, so that was fifty-six, and we're talking about sixty-eight for two-point-five million. So that was 56 and we're talking about 68 for 2.5 million. It seems very expensive.
I think one thing going back to two years ago, when those parking concepts were first developed. One, there was a kind of a break in time where the board directed us, and Christie did a lot of work on that, to explore other options with surrounding properties and other possibilities for parking, which we did. And then when we came back to the board with Werrell Parking and Wallstart, or Werrell Park and Wall Street Parking as one of those options, it really kind of, the, the intent and the pursuit really changed from what we had done previously. Previously, it was that tax lot, what could be done with parking. With board direction related to the park, we came back with, okay, how can we maintain the park? Improve the park and then add additional capacity. So originally, the direction that we were given and what we pursued was parking specific. And so those costs reflect that. And then when we kind of revisited the concept after doing the search for the properties, that's when preservation of the park kind of became a, one of the values to incorporate.
And there's, are there small shared revenues from the state associated with the parks? I don't know, I get the specifics on that.
Commissioners, there are. There are RV registrations that go into a dedicated fund that we use for recreational purposes. We have a couple of so-called parks in our county, Werrell Park being one of them. The interior circle of the fairgrounds is another. That we, it's, it's a very small amount, less than 100,000 a year, that we put towards park-like maintenance. And those funds would be preserved for maintenance of any updated Werrell Park as well.
As I say, I mean, this, this will be a downtown amenity. There has been a parking opportunity for walking from here to downtown Bend core for restaurants in the evenings. This is just that, that next block over from the courthouse itself. So it's, it's really an optimal location for, you know, courthouse activities. And this is the long-term, big picture too. You know, if we get a few judges and do the expansion over there, it'd be nice to not have this project happening at the same time if we can, you know, I'm just leaning into it a little bit here if we pull the trigger.
Well, the memo I'm looking at is actually dated September 3rd, 2020. So that was only six months ago for the costs that we were presented with in September. So it's not that long ago.
Well, as I say, I, I think this is a, you know, the, everybody's thoughts and opinions put together here. So I mean, it's a board of commissioners. Are we going to put direction to it or, or, you know, I mean Commissioner Dare, if you, you know, if we're looking just for parking and not spending money, I mean, we've surveyed downtown.
To gain 68 spots is so far below what we were looking at on our presentation on, in September. So we're really, we're gaining only 68 and we could have gained 56 with one concept that was only 1.6 million total. So I mean, we're gaining, we're paying a lot of money and I happen to like that park. I like to look at it. I don't walk in it, the deer in it and love seeing the deer go through it. It's beautiful. I think it's a, you know, it's, it's boulders, it's rustic. Look at our parking lot out there. Other than the Christmas lights, it leaves a lot to be desired.
Also then back to the big picture though, I mean, truly, the downtown, you know, courthouse is going to need some parking. You know, that, just like I was saying, this is the walking, this is the next block over from the front of the courthouse and the DA's office. So this is an ideal location. And then from just reviewing the, you know, the big picture, putting that amenity, referring to a park there where, you know, community members, people can be there. We can go out there for lunch because, you know, I've been up and down in the park there, but I've never taken my lunch out to the picnic table out in the middle there. This may be more inviting for that. So I'm just making sure.
I will, yeah, I will definitely. I will, I will be much more likely to take my lunch out there to, to sit or even, or even have a meeting when, you know, someone is coming to the office to, to meet with me. You know, if there, if there's some easily accessible tables right there in front of the building, I, I could see that being a great meeting space. I, I do like the idea of a park that people will use more actively. I, and, you know, the, the existing park, it is, you know, it is aesthetically nice. But, you know, you know, part of what we're seeing out there is a bunch of rock that was put there when they were building the highway. You know, so, so I, I, I guess I'm not as, I'm not so attached to the existing, to the existing hillside there. Because, you know, I, I understand that what we see is a product of a past major construction project. Which actually leads me, leads me to one other question I had, which is, do we have any idea whether OSU Cascade still needs more rock and fill for, for their project? And if so, I was wondering if we could make, if we could set up some kind of partnership with them to, to make part of, you know, part of that, part of that hill go away and, and address some of their need as well.
Yeah, I'm not personally knowledgeable about what their needs are, but it's certainly something that could be explored. And any contractors that were bidding on the excavation, part of their plan, I presume, would include places to utilize that fill, so.
Great, thanks.
Well, so this is our board of commissioners discussion on the topic. How, so at this time, we can, you know, put direction to it, you know, thinking about committing to spending dollars. And I know Commissioner Dare, I'm sensitive to, you know, how expensive are each?
For 68 spots, I think.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying.
No, I mean, look, did, did you get the memo from last September? Did you see those different costs?
I didn't, I didn't see it. But we, we were paying for, we're paying for parking and a better park. This is, I guess, the way I see it.
And I'd just like to provide a little clarity on the, on the concepts that we provided previously. It was actually concept number eight that the, that the board landed on. And at that time, it was estimated of 114 new parking spaces. And we recognize that the number is lower. But until we go through the conceptual planning, like what we've, what we've presented, it's difficult to know exactly how many spaces. So we do recognize that the number is lower. So, you know, we understand and appreciate what Commissioner Dare is saying.
Well, and there's a difference. I mean, it could be, you know, a big square parking lot, like in front of large retailers. Or it could be, you know, a flow, little bit of, you know, soft corners and different subsections to, to park in. So I mean, there's a choice there. As I say, if we did, and it, yeah, pave the whole thing, blacktop, put stripes, move on. But there's, there's obviously trees in here also, so big commitment.
So we're paying a half a million dollars more for 46 spots less. But, okay, so those are my numbers.
Yeah. Well, so today, if we give direction to proceed, as I said, hopefully not controversially, but give direction, proceed, what's the next step?
So the next step would be that staff would prepare a request for proposals for a design team. And then those would be evaluated and, and a contract would be, would be established with a design team, yet to be determined. And then move forward with construction drawings and RFP for construction.
And the estimates have those kind of dollars in it or is it still before that?
The estimates include soft costs, design costs, if that's your question, Commissioner.
Yeah, so it's kind of in the big picture already, okay.
In, in addition to construction. The, the estimates are not hard construction costs only.
Yeah.
And, and I will just, one caveat on the estimates. You know, we work really hard to, to, to the best we can, based on a simple concept, come up with conceptual budget estimates and that's what those estimates represent.
Yeah, okay. So they could be higher or lower, but those are the best estimates at this time. So then, when there's a mature design, do you think it would be a, a simple bid package? So we won't have to do any design, build, anything, construction manager situation, just?
Right. I think in this case, it'd be a pretty clear-cut set of construction drawings that the local construction community would be able to accurately bid against.
Okay. Well, so then the next step is, yeah, committing to doing more work on the design from this conceptual plan. Is there support for that?
Can I ask one more design question? So thinking about, thinking about this parking, the, the parking around this park being used by the courthouse, by, by us during the regular, you know, eight to five work week. It, it does strike me that, that the, the way that this park is being designed, it, it could function a little bit, like on weekends or on summer evenings, it could function a little bit like a big plaza. And, and I could, I can imagine, you know, certain kinds of events or, you know, festivals or things like that happening in, you know, in this, you know, in the park and in the parking area. And I'm wondering if we, I, I know we, we thought about so many things, you know, like ballot drop-off and, you know, blood drives and things like that. But I'm, I'm wondering if we, anyone has taken a look, kind of a look at this design with that kind of an eye for, you know, making this a kind of vibrant public space for, you know, weekend or, or evening events?
Yeah, I'll take that real quick. That's a great question. And then actually, in working with BLRB Architects, we did kind of talk about that and incorporated an area that could be used for that. So like you said, it's sort of that plaza feel. But even on the bottom, let's see, the southeast section there, we even talked with the architect about doing a different sort of surface. It could be pavers or something like that to make it more like a plaza feel. So yeah, to your point, absolutely. I think it's something that could be used for multipurpose, as you described.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I just, I, I didn't have enough of a sense with kind of, we got a little bit of topography in there, whether, whether this would work in that way or not. But that, I'm glad you, glad you thought about that.
In 2019, when I actually was suggesting that we would use our parking lot for helping downtown Bend, well, Eric's in the room. And I do believe that we had to consider, okay, are people going to start leaving their trash there when they were using our parking lot? Now, I, they only used it a couple of times, I believe, maybe the Fourth of July weekend or something. But we had it available in 19, remember, way back in the dark ages, when the downtown would be booked and everything. But we were worried, we had to check with our liability company, is it something that we want to do? So now you're talking about putting a park here, so that's going to, you know, that's going to be a liability issue that I do want to bring up. Because I know in order to add the parking on the weekend, open to the public, you always have to assume that risk.
And I know that the Downtown Business Association does do, you know, kind of their, their co-op of trash facilities and kind of common, common event management, I think. So there's, there's a discussion there. That's a future discussion.
No, this, this, this will draw people, both in a positive way and potentially in, in negative ways as well.
Well, we've seen the Communities for Agricultural CSA drop off coordination. So it could be as much as, you know, a pickup truck or a few pickup trucks for a couple hours in a weekend evening or a week, or a weekday evening or a weekend.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, now that you mention that, I know that the farmer's market has really struggled to find a, you know, a, a long-term, stable place to, to set up. And you can imagine on a weekend that this would be a great place to, to do, to do something like that.
Well, and yeah, that's, that's future and I don't know how that, how well that would scale, you know, as in a certain number would fit, but it couldn't, just couldn't get very big. So yeah, as I say, I'm supportive of proceeding with design at this time, with this architectural layout, acknowledging Commissioner Dare's statements about, you know, the total cost, you know, per, per spot. But this will be that, that long-term kind of community amenity park plus design for, you know, the, the multipurpose uses. You know, you can see this little turnout lane for ballot drop-off and tax payments. I mean, it's just designed for the solution for the area.
Do, do we have any kind of, so this is like a, a plan view sense of the park? Do we have any kind of like 3D visualizations? I, I feel like maybe you showed, you've shown some of those to us already or am I imagining that?
We haven't had those prepared at this time. That would be one of the developments of this concept. Once a design team was brought on board for the full construction project. And then that would be where some decision opportunities would be for, you know, the extent of the elevation changes, et cetera, and how those are incorporated with accessible pathways and other design features. So we haven't, to this point, done a kind of an artist's rendering or elevation view because we hadn't really gotten to that point in development.
But that, that, that would also, I guess, you know, to kind of look at it another way, that would be one of the benefits of having a, you know, a thoughtful design stage for this project is, is, because it is, it's, it's kind of, it will be a radical transformation of that space out there. And I think, you know, having those kinds of visualizations might be very helpful for us for kind of getting to a place where we're at peace with, with removing the hill and, and because we'll be able to see in a real visual kind of way what, what, you know, what our future looks like, what, what, how exciting this park is going to be when it, when it's built. So that makes me even more excited about this, this design stage and, and proceeding with an RFP.
Any thoughts, Commissioner?
No, I've said my thoughts.
So as I say, is this a, a voting item at this time? Or do you have consensus to proceed with some acknowledgement of the costs associated with, you know, how many parts or lot, spots were added?
I, I also think that, you know, doing a design process will also, I mean, we could, we could go through this design process and say like, and before construction, you know, the real expensive part, we could just say, we could just say, oh, you know, this is not looking like we, we thought it was going to, you know, this is not accomplishing what we intended. And, and it's, it's also still an opportunity to kind of change direction as well.
Thoughts, Tom?
Yes, Commissioners, we would appreciate a minute's motion to direct staff, as noted in the recommendation.
Do we want to discuss anymore? Sure, are we ready for a motion?
I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. I, I move that we direct staff to proceed with a request for proposals for design services and to develop construction documents based on the concepts that we have seen today.
And I will second it as the chair, thinking that Commissioner Dare.
I won't be seconding.
Okay, there we go, clarifying.
Clearly, I will not be seconding for 68 parking spots.
Very good. So is there any other discussion? With that, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
No.
And Chair votes yes. So I do, it's a shame that we're divided on this at this time. This is a real positive project, lots needed. But at this time, we'll go with that and look forward to the next steps.
Thank you.
Yeah, and hopefully through the design process, we can get to something that we're all excited about.
At this time, item number four, input to OSHA on draft COVID workplace rule.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. A few weeks ago, the board discussed OSHA's draft rules regulating workplace COVID rules. And OSHA made a, a couple of draft changes. And there are welcoming input from employers. And the board talked about submitting a, a letter for the record and addressing the indefinite duration of the rules. The current rules are set to expire in May. And OSHA said they can no longer extend the term. The current rules are set to expire in May, and OSHA said they can no longer extend the temporary rule. They would need to make the rule permanent, but would rescind it when the rules are no longer necessary. The Board's direction was to draft a letter advocating tying the permanent rule to the Governor's executive order. So the draft, there's a draft letter for your consideration. And I'm happy to answer any questions or make any changes that the Board sees fit.
Yeah, I like this, you know, automatic response to executive orders going away. It's just, and I think it'd be for their benefit too. So that was the concept from previous time we spoke about this.
I didn't quite understand your last sentence. It's very supportive of the vaccine clinics and their important role to combat the virus. I don't, I don't know, to me, that seems a little.
Probably should be role.
It might just be a little.
Yeah, role, I think it's R-O-O-L, maybe, role? Or R-O-L-E? Yeah, it's, it's rule, I'm like going, okay. Yeah, that didn't make sense.
Yes, I'll correct that.
Role, R-O-L-E, please. I was going like, what are they trying to say there?
I was also wondering whether, you know, clinics is, you know, covers a certain range of vaccine, vaccination activity, but if, I don't know, I don't know. Well, I guess there is, there is vaccination going on in, in, in much more dispersed forms as well. And so I, I was wondering whether we could use a word like, you know, vaccination efforts or vaccination initiatives to kind of make it, make it broader.
Sure, would be happy to make that change.
I mean, when you, when we use the word clinic, I picture like a big, you know, our, you know, our mass vax clinic, but, but you know.
That is happening in pharmacies and.
Yeah.
Medical offices.
Yeah, or, you know, you could, I mean, you could imagine it happening out of, you know, like mobile operations at a certain point as well.
This legisla, it's actually 126 pages long, because I printed it at home. And it's 126 pages that they want to make permanent. Is there any way we could add the weight of 126 pages and the unintended consequences for businesses? You know, I don't know. I know that we are only concerned with the fact that it's indefinite duration when it goes permanent, but is there any kind of word in there that we could add to give it just a little more substance? I mean, they really, they want to do this, they haven't had public testimony on it. Are landscapers all supposed to ride in a separate truck? I've heard from people, and that's what they actually have been doing. It's so expensive, you know. I just feel like for our business community, it just needs to be a little bit stronger, even though we're only addressing one small issue.
I'd be happy, if the Board supports additional sentences, I'm happy to add, you know, the impact of the regulations on, on businesses and small businesses.
We could say there, you know, there are true impacts while managing the effects of COVID, you know, so it's just acknowledging that they're really, you know, these are the rules. We weren't asked, it's going to be put in place, obviously.
And, I mean, and we could also, we could also kind of express our fear about, you know, if this is, if we don't have a clear plan for, you know, for, for these permanent rules to be extinguished, you know, we're concerned that, you know, we're concerned that businesses may face unnecessary, you know, at a certain point, unnecessary restrictions for a protracted period of time. And it would have all, you know, X, Y, and Z kinds of impacts on those businesses to, to be dealing with, you know, restrictions that, that are not needed anymore.
Right, where's our herd immunity? And the other thing, because businesses are right now, the immediate concern is going to be finding employees. And that's what we're hearing, you know, you see help on it everywhere in the community. So yeah, I just think we need to, I like those ideas, make it stronger.
Okay, I'll be happy to add a couple of sentences, and we could bring it back under other items on Wednesday.
Great, because it's not due till Friday, right?
Correct, April 2nd.
Good.
Wonderful, okay.
Thank you.
Good discussion on that topic. So at this time, other items, if there's anything else.
Oh, I just want to say that thank you to the High Desert Stampede for putting on the rodeo. I heard that they paid out $133,000, I believe. And I think the community was really happy to be there. Social distancing was taking place, and yeah, it was great for the community. And we got a lot of coverage on, on national exposure. So thank you for the attendance of people that all were sponsors for the event. It was unbelievable to see all the banners around the arena, how many people in the community stepped up and did what they do best, and that's support local. So thank you very much.
Yeah, well, yeah, my wife and I were able to attend on Friday night, so we were able to see you there. So it was a really a good event, a lot of people having a good time, celebrating the rodeo culture. And, you know, the, the stands were sparsely populated, but it was a good, good mix of how to do, do it in the COVID times.
Yeah, they added an extra night, Thursday night. So they had sellouts Friday and Saturday night for their limited attendance, but it was great. So, thank you. And now we just need to pull together our Sisters Rodeo Committee.
June, yeah, June 6th or whatever, is there?
June 9th through the 13th. I drive by in the morning.
Oh yeah, you see that.
I should remember those dates, so anyway.
I, I believe all three of us received a letter from the Deschutes Trails Coalition, just kind of, and the letter described, you know, their role in the community and their efforts to, you know, to expand, enhance, maintain, you know, these important, you know, recreational assets that, that are, you know, very important to our tourism economy and to just the mental health of a lot of people in, in our, in our community. So the Deschutes Trails Coalition asked me if I would be willing to sit on their Board in a kind of a formal capacity, as, you know, wearing, wearing my hat as a, as a Deschutes County Commissioner. And I would like to do that, and I just wanted to let you all know that I was planning to do that and, and also to ask if in the future, there are items that the Deschutes Trails Coalition is working on, that I can bring those to, to the Board of Commissioners and as a representative in, in both directions and ask for sign-on or evaluation of initiatives.
Wonderful, yeah, I mean, you know, so it'll always be a, you know, when it comes down to dollars, that'll be the decision point. But yeah, more information is better always, yeah, so congratulations on that, that's great. As I say, I, I think there's some trail riding in my near future, I just got to go do it. I did move the bicycle this weekend, though, it was in the way, so it's been moved.
They work on trails for horses, too, so.
Yeah, horse trails, absolutely.
You can get out in a number of ways.
Yep.
And I do believe that, from the emails, I think Smith Rock was better this last weekend. Thank you for the park service and fixing, cleaning up one of their parking lots. And then I know the Sheriff's was patrolling, so that was great news, because the weather, again, of course, was fabulous on Saturday. And debatable yesterday, but then, and I guess we had another person fall victim to the problem at Misery Trail. So I guess every weekend, we have somebody that has to be taken out on a stretcher. Yes.
Yep, that was in the news. So special shout out for our Vietnam veterans. So today is Vietnam War Veterans Day. So there's a couple of events happening here in Central Oregon, I know. Today at the Central Oregon Veterans Ranch in Southern Deschutes County in Le Pine, there is a, a flagpole dedication, I think, at the Frontier Days, done by the veterans. So that, that was an hour ago, I was invited, but I'm here instead. So just, this is the day from 1973, where, I guess, I don't know my history, but either it was done or, or, yeah.
Draw was completed.
Yeah, there we go. So thank you very much, Vietnam veterans and all the military out there, military veterans. On another note, I was able to attend the Eastern Oregon Counties Association. This was a legislative call this morning, so update from Rocky Dallum, I think his name is. And, yeah, nothing really to report, though, just, just like on some Friday, kind of going down things. There was no positions taken. This is that transition time of the legislative efforts where, you know, some of the bills are stopping or going to go over to the other house. So we're just learning about what the status is and everything. So yeah, Commissioner Adair and I, are you going to dial in tomorrow?
I'm going to do tomorrow mornings.
Yeah, okay, so that's how we're coordinating, we do, you know.
That's great.
Mine will be at 6:45.
Yeah.
And maybe my baby horse will be born, so.
At the same time.
Yeah, wouldn't that be nice? Come on, Foxy. Anyway, yes.
And if there's anything, anything interesting at the, at that eastern Oregon legislators' call, you'll, you'll let us know on Wednesday?
Of course.
Well, and so the meat industry, I still want to be an advocate, and they were asking, you know, oh, so then there was a EOCA Board meeting, it could have happened, but it did not happen today. So, because that's something that happens once in a while, so that's kind of the group of Commissioners also. So, but yeah, just those, the bills and the industry of the protein and the meat processing, if, you know, if something can happen there. So as I say, it's right before we find out if some bills are going to proceed or not, I think, so we shall see. Okay, anything else?
Oh, I did have a conversation, that's why I had to leave the legislative call at 9:00 AM on Friday with Gina Nichols, who's running ALC, and they are working on a new formula for billing counties. So we should be seeing that shortly. She just wanted us to be aware of it.
Yeah.
That it was coming. They've tried, you know, to make it fair with a formula, so, and it hasn't been easy.
Okay. I was just trying to see if I did anything else since last Wednesday, I think that's it, for here.
Yeah, Commissioners, a week from today, on April 5th, at your request, Holly Jukes, the Supervisor of Deschutes National Forest, and Dennis Tietzel, the Director of the Prineville District of BLM, are both coming here to have a conversation with you all, to kind of outline their priorities that they're working on from their perspectives and likely to hear the same from you, how we work together historically and areas for the future. So I just wanted to plant that seed. If there are specific areas or questions that you have of either of them related to Deschutes National Forest land or BLM land within the county, I would be happy to gather those up and give them a heads up so that they can address those questions or issues specifically, make sure that they include them in their presentation. So you don't have to tell me now, but if, if you think of things or have some things in mind, just please pass them on to me and I'll get them to, to Holly and Dennis.
And actually, Holly is going to take part on Thursday, April 1st. The China Hat community that has all gotten together down there, she is going to be on that call. So I think it's really excellent news, and I want to thank Sheriff Nelson for their team in removing the 10 vehicles as our pilot project, you know, to clean up that community. And what, where did they have another stabbing or something, was that in China Hat yesterday? Or this weekend or something?
It was over Friday, I think, yeah.
Okay, I know, I went like, okay. Anyway, they, they need to get that community a lot safer. So I know you live down there, don't you, Tom?
I do.
Yes, there's a lot of communities, and they have all come together. So hopefully, something positive will happen.
I reached out to Sheriff Nelson, because you had asked for an update on that 10-vehicle removal pilot, and he said he would check, and we'll try and get something scheduled where they can come in and speak specifically to that.
Oh, good.
Tom, right off the top of my head, I would say, you know, three things that I, I'll be interested in discussing, which I'm sure are going to be on their list as well, is fuels reduction and kind of planning for the upcoming wildfire season. Yeah, homelessness and, and kind of the, the presence, you know, the presence of a lot of homeless people on, on public lands from federal to state to local levels. And, and, you know, kind of, you know, what are we doing for those folks long-term besides shuffling them around from place to place? And then the third thing I'd be interested in talking about would be, you know, some of our recreational infrastructure and, and kind of how we keep up with the growth of recreational demand, the demand for trails and, and other kinds of recreational assets in our community.
Great, you clicked off four of the five that I had noted there on.
There you go.
Thanks.
Okay, also, I think Nick LeLac sent to you on Friday a draft letter related to ag buildings. I think it was House Bill 2611. I don't know if either Nick or Whitney, or, they're not here, are still on Zoom. Do you, I don't know if you brought that letter or have it, I have a one copy, anyway, if you want to take that up or.
Yeah, I didn't print it out, I was able to look at it.
Yeah, me too.
So, yeah, I mean.
I didn't bring it.
Were you able to review it?
Yes.
I, I thought it looked good.
Yeah. So it does, you know, take that, reinforces the opposition position, which is different than some other jurisdictions. I think, did we determine AOC was, I forget if, was it, somebody had, yeah, we're opposed to it and other people weren't, so I forget who was the other one.
The Farm Bureau, isn't this the one?
Oh yeah, Farm Bureau, maybe, yeah, that's who.
We were, we were supportive of, of robust building codes for agricultural buildings and others were not.
Is 2611?
But there's a bill, yeah, the bill says.
So this one says we are, thank you for the opportunity, in opposition to 2611. Okay, I thought this was a bill that.
It was a bill to weaken the, weaken the requirements, that, okay, now I'm remembering, yes.
Well, no, to call an ag building, ag building, you're not allowed to do any other permit requirements or inspections. And in Deschutes County, yeah, maybe we're, yeah, maybe we're not ready if, unless we have the printout for everyone here.
There's Whitney.
Yeah, Commissioners, I think it was primarily, ag exempt buildings has been an issue in Deschutes County for, ever since I've been with the county 27 years, and, and there's a tendency, I mean, they were created to benefit farmers, to not, not impose the cost of building permits and so forth on true farmers for hay storage and true agricultural uses. There's been a tendency in our county for them to be used for other things that are non-ag related, and there are a lot of them out there. So the concern was to lessen the rather stringent requirements for purely ag use as part of this bill, that there was some concern that it may not be best for public safety. And there was some questions that were raised in that letter in terms of ensuring that we, you know, had an opportunity to do just that, to preserve public safety and make it clear what, what kinds of uses, by use of this term primarily, what that might suggest or allow there. So I think that was sort of the central concern, was just bringing that to light for the debate.
So I'm supportive of that letter, if we want to make a motion.
What was the bill number again?
2611.
Opposition to House Bill 2611.
So I would move that we sign on to the, to the letter in opposition to HB 2611, as written.
I just need clarification from Whitney. Whitney, is that the bill that the Farm Bureau is supporting? House Bill 2611.
Yeah.
I think you may be on mute if you were saying, if you said something.
Yes, are you on mute?
Checking, system really, if I can pull testimony up, that's been submitted. If you bear with me one second.
Thank you.
The Oregon Farm Bureau has submitted testimony in support of 2166. I'm happy to print that letter and share it with the Commissioners if that's helpful information. The Oregon Property Owners Association also submitted testimony in support of the bill.
See, and, I mean, and I, I support those activities, but when it goes from a hay shed to an event facility for public use, that's, that's what happens in Deschutes County. So it's because of that. And I, I remember going into community development about 16, 17 years ago, and I said, I've got this kind of building on my property, I wanted to finish one side of it, a wall, and that's when they explained, oh, it's an ag exempt building, I didn't need anything other than registering that I'm working on it. It was an ag building already. It was an ag building already. And I what, you know, you're not allowed to have public events, don't, don't convert it, or I don't know, I forget what the explanation was, but I learned about that many years ago, and I have one of those on our property.
And we do have, just like this weekend, we have very strong wind events sometimes, and, and we can have very heavy snow loads. So I mean, you know, mixing those two things with buildings that are, you know, not designed for, you know, lots of people to be under, but then having agricultural events in your community as well, it's.
Yep.
It creates real risks.
As I say, I mean, for the building I have, the snow load's probably the thing. Someday, there's gonna be feet of snow up there, and it will collapse, I think. And it hasn't yet, but it's just not designed for public use.
Interesting, because I, as I mentioned last week when we were talking about this, you see the old barns that are still standing, and then I see the brand-new arena down the house from me that collapsed.
But you know which ones we don't see standing are the ones that already collapsed.
I know, but there are a lot of old ones. I mean.
I know.
One died in, what was it, a couple of years ago? I mean, the old ones didn't die, but the new one died. So I'm going, yes, and, you know, just like our building, it's a flat roof. And so here we are with a major snow load intermittently, what is it, every 20 years or something? But when we get that snow load, we've got, we've gotta really worry about how many roofs in Ben collapsed a couple of years ago?
So there was a motion. Are you, I was standing by for a second. I will if you don't.
You can, you can.
I'll second this also then, okay? So we've had some good discussion. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes also. So that's support, or opposition bill for House Bill 2611. Thank you, Tom, for bringing that. As I say, we all looked at it, and then we just didn't bring it here today. Is there anything else? Seeing none. At this time, we are going to go to an executive session. In fact, it will be two today, so ORS 1926602H.